... We've already done the roll call. So now we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got several special reports and recognition stuff.
Yeah, let's go students first because they were here at 5:30.
Yeah.
And then came back home 6:30 and then anyhow Owen Keith and Jacob Todd if you come up to the podium and your coach Randy Nos, cross-country coach.
Who told them the wrong time?
I'll take the blame, I might have told them at 5:30.
Yes.
But in any event here, we have a young man, Jacob Todd, who was 31st?
Yes.
Yes, 31st in the state cross-country meet this year and I asked the coach and fellows to come by before we get to Jacob, we also have a senior here Owen Keith who actually had the flu really bad, the regional meet, and who qualified last year. Owen, the reason I asked you to come in because I think the young man standing beside you, and you probably know this, your leadership over the last few years has pulled out the best of your teammates and I want you to know that has not gone unnoticed in there. I know you were really disappointed, it's hard to run with the flu and that, but you handled that like a good leader and now I know you're excited for Jacob, but I wanted to look you in the eye and tell you that I believe, and we talked to Coach Quack which about this, and he agreed that Jacob went to the state because of your leadership and our cross-country program the last three years and I know, because you drove by here a lot of times on your runs as you're going around the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah, yeah, they're going a little bit faster than a jog, but I watched Jacob, you know, at some invitationals a few years ago and watched him just kind of improve his times and I appreciate your leadership Owen and congratulations Jacob and Randy as you do a spectacular job for our cross-country and our track team and so we appreciate that. So if you would, state your name, what year you're in, what your plans are after here, tell the board who you are, tell TV, TV's on right over there.
I am. I'm Owen Keith and I'm a senior at Newark High School and I've been running dry cross-country for four years now and like he said, it kind of sucks at any of the state meet, but it kind of happens. I mean, even though it's my senior year and like I really, 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 really wanted to go, just some things you don't know about, they just happen in life. It's like, yes, I guess. Jacob?
I'm Jacob Todd, I'm a senior at Newark High School. I'm extremely grateful for these guys to be pushing me as a team and everything and I've been running cross-country track for four years now and it's a great sport with great guys and a great coach to be pushing us and I felt like I was at the state meet kind of just representing our whole team even though we didn't make it, but it just, I felt like I had the whole team behind me and it was a, it was a good season.
And I'm Randy Nos, I get credit for these guys showing up and doing what they're supposed to do. They just run, I've just, I'm trying to get a culture here in Newark that we got just in front of us going on too and getting a lot of kids showing up and these good leaders, these seniors are showing the kids that, you know, running at quarter to six or quarter after six every morning is not a bad thing and it's helped them over the years and so I've been coaching now for 11 years and we've had seven different kids make it to the state meet and these guys, he's the second fastest kid in the last 35 years and he's the third fastest kid with their fastest times and so they've had some good times and they've really been good leaders for our program.
Guys, can you give what your best times were and what people remember? This is from 3.1 miles from here.
My best time for the 5K is 15:40.
Oh, my best is 15:54 for a 5K.
My best time is 14:56, but that was college. You guys will take that down.
A couple of weeks ago I ran a 5K at 38 minutes, so that's scary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you would, walk up there, shake your hand.
Thank you. For coming back to college times.
These fellows can stick around if you want or you can go and do your homework.
Maybe not.
We also have a group with us tonight, I think just the directions are here. We talked a little bit about our marching band, starting in August, they've done a lot since then, so Lee, if you and Diana want to step up to the podium, talk a little bit about your fall, what you've accomplished, because they've accomplished a lot.
Well, I'm Lee Hour if you don't know, I'm the high school band director and since July 11th, it's been quite the roller coaster ride in all in a positive way. I didn't really know how students would react moving into the new position and bringing in a whole lot of new things with the band and hopefully new energy for our program with all of the new staff and literally every single person from the parents to the students to staff and any volunteer that we had in the community really came behind us and really helped make this just a special year for the band. We qualified in our second performance, our second OMA performance of the year and qualified every single time after that, so six superior ratings during our regular season and then we're able to go to state on the very first weekend and we performed after Burn Union High School, who is one of the best Class A sized bands in the state and we were able to get a superior rating right after them, followed by Pickerington North and Grove City, so it made us feel even more proud of our students, the fact that they ran with the big dogs and were able to get a superior rating, the highest rating you can get at state this year. So it was a testament to their hard work, the staff we have and everyone's commitment to the goal of making this a thing for years to come and I, to myself and to the kids, I said that our new streak is getting superiors every time we go out, not just once a year and getting to state, but making that a normal thing for us. If you did not know, this is our 37th year qualifying for state marching band finals, which is every year in its existence since 1980 and they were the only band in Class Double A that has done that all 37 years and 29, this is now the 29th year this year of getting a superior at state, so we're super excited and I'm happy to have her back on board with the marching band staff after a few years' absence, so having great staff and great kids makes the teamwork, so.
It does. Do you have anything? I was just very, very happy to be back on the staff. I was here in year 15 of the streak, so that goes back a ways and to be here for number 37 and to see these kids succeed the way they did and to see the pride coming back in their faces was a big, big deal for me, so, you know, the pride, I don't want to say the pride is back because it really never disappeared, but there was a sparkle and there was an excitement and an energy this year that was a little bit different. It was nice to be part of it.
Lee, the way I have this figured, you're young enough, and this was 37, you could get to 70, you could be here to 70 straight here. What a way to start, so no pressure. Not at all, but.
I hate to be the one who keeps talking. There you go. I love it. I know some parents of some of the big kids and early on in the year I was hearing, oh, the kids are really thriving, they're working so hard, there's all this discipline and then you started getting these scores and then suddenly they're saying, kids are so excited, they're seeing the results of their work, you know, and I just think that's neat, you know? These type of activities aren't there to teach a kid how to play a instrument or whatever, it's there to teach them beyond that and when I hear those stories, that's happening.
Thank you.
Maybe somebody else says something.
You want my 5K time?
Yeah, please, man, watch one so bad.
I'm doing one in February, so.
That's the kind of stuff though, and we talked about it, that doesn't show up on a state report card, you know, that you've got great, great, and I'm going to call them student leaders, not just kids, but there's student leaders out there doing good things and as long as you're creating that kind of environment, I keep doing that, please.
We'll do our best. Thank you for all your support.
For the next 33 years.
That's the big event in August with Blue Coat's back.
Next August, oh, I don't know the exact date, we're not allowed to say officially yet.
Oh, okay.
It's early August.
All right.
Yeah, they'll be back. And our Christmas concert, of course, we have our all-city Christmas concert on December 12th and then the high school Christmas concert on December 15th.
And to all the people out in TV land, they're still working to raise money for their new uniforms, if you have some leftover money that you're really looking for somewhere to put it, talk to these folks. There, I'll give you a plug.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Thanks for coming, thanks for what you do.
Thank you for having me.
Continuing on with the leadership theme tonight, we have great student leaders, great staff leaders here in our district and this next one, I'll ask Barbara to come on up if you would, so I'm going to turn it over to Barb. We have a group of teachers with us tonight that have accomplished a lot, made us look very good in the state and made our, I will tell you that our mentor program, not only do we hire good people, we're, we're talking today as a cabinet about, already for next year, we talk, Barb and Mindy are going out tomorrow to OU already and we've got our spring planned for recruiting and, you know, we always talk about we're going to get good teammates, good leaders and they brought in some good leaders tonight that are really excelling in our, I'll call it an award-winning mentor program, second to none around the state, I'll say that. If you've got a better mentor program than ours, bring it forward, we're up for the challenge, so Barbara, if you would.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Yip and Board. Excuse me, a couple, about a month ago I think, give or take, Megan, one of our mentor, or one of our resident educators, young teacher, forwarded an email to her mentor to say, is this just for me or is it for everybody? And so we kind of did some investigation and found out that, and I'm going to have everybody come up here with me, just come up now, REs and mentor teachers, past and present, because this is clearly not about me, it's about this group that will be, that I'm very fortunate enough to be surrounded by, but as part of our resident educator program, our first through fourth year teachers participate in our mentoring program, which we've talked about before, but we got these emails from, from a gentleman, from Educopia and the Department of Education and Ohio, ODE, that we had six teachers that scored in the top 100 of the resident educators who were taking the RISA over the past three years. So with that, we started, we've got Ashley Saborniak, Michael Reimer, Sarah Net, Megan Rajah and Kelsey Bartlett. Along with them, we've got Laura Sluss, Marcie Weiner, Jen Stokes and former mentor teacher who is now our Hillview Elementary Principal, Nick Myers. Clearly, as Mr. Yip and we all believe, we want to surround ourselves with very good, strong leaders and certainly with our mentoring program, we clearly have that with, with exceptional leadership with that, as well as with the teachers that are standing beside me, because when we were at, we were recognized, they were recognized at the State House about a month ago and the gentleman from Educopia, I'm drawing a blank on his name, I'm thinking it was Mark, I can't remember, told us, because I wanted to know if we had the most teachers represented and we clearly believed that we did, he would not tell us. He just said, you all have a very good mentoring program and I said, come on, you've got to tell me, do we have the most people here? He's like, all I'm letting you know is, you have a very good, very strong mentoring program. And knowing that, we all like Twitter, one of the things that I saw from a colleague of mine in a district a little southwest of us, they had, we had six people, they had five, so I still think that we had the most recognized, but anyway, wanted to just congratulate all of you again and share this excitement with the board because to be in the top 100 is phenomenal and as you've heard us talk before, our passage rate is on the Resident Educator Summit of Assessment, the test that all of these leaders took and passed, our passage rate is about 93 to 95 percent, which is, goes attributed to our mentor teachers and their leadership with our, with our beginning teachers, so very proud of everyone.
Can we have each other to step up, say, hey, where are you Keith, please? Okay.
I'm Kelsey Bartlett and I teach at 4th grade at Cherry Valley and I taught 1st grade when I did my RISA.
I'm Megan Rajah and I teach 6th grade science at Wilson.
Hi, I'm Sarah Net and I'm 8th grade math teacher at Wilson.
Michael Hunter, 5th grade, legend.
I'm Ashley Saborniak, I'm 2nd grade at Cherry Valley.
Ashley, tell who your father is.
Oh, yeah, Ashley Fullwinds Saborniak.
Art Fullwinds, just so they know, yeah. Baron Smith, who teaches history at the high school, is, was able to come in.
I'm Laura Sluss and I'm one of the full-time mentors and I am in my 6th year with the mentoring program. I know it's going fast and before that I taught 1st grade at Cherry Valley.
Marcie Weiner, this is my 4th year as a mentor teacher and I was at the high school before that.
Jennifer Stokes, and this is my 4th year in the mentor program and I was at Hillview prior to that.
Nick Myers, principal at Hillview, this is four years out of mentoring now.
Great job, thank you.
Great job.
Enjoy the year.
Okay, we'll move on to communications report now, if anyone would like to address the board, step to the podium, give your name, your address, and you'll have up to five minutes. Okay, being done, we will move on to a public meeting on the issue of the employment of Debbie Hill by the North City School District Board of Education. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Debbie Hill's reemployment in the district following her retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each and all public comments will be closed after 30 minutes. Assignments sheet will be used if necessary to determine the order in which persons will address the board. If anyone would like to address the board regarding the reemployment of Debbie Hill, please step forward. Okay, being done, we'll move forward. Next is treasurer's recommendations.
Item 2A is approval of minutes, Board of Education meeting. Recommended minutes of the following board meeting be approved as shown, October 10, 2016, regular meeting, October 26, 2016, special meeting, November 3, 2016, special meeting. Item 2B is approval of the October 2016 financial statements of payment to vendors. We received interest this month of $22,086.63 and our financial statements are in balance. We have a total of $44,711,670.21 in the bank. The fund breakdown on that is general fund is $30,470,000, bond retirement is $4200,000, permanent improvement is $1660,000, building fund is $160,000, food services is $1560,000, insurance funds is $3430,000, classroom facilities is $2600,000, miscellaneous others is $630,000, for the $44,710,000. The next page in your packet board is the financial income statement. It shows that in the general fund that we've had a total of $28,728,283 revenue this year and so far out of the general fund, we have spent $23,213,115 out of the general fund. Item 2C is the supplemental permanent appropriations. You'll see the descriptions at the bottom of that page in your, in your financial packet. We have the general fund, an additional $10,000, that's being appropriated to continue the repair of instruments for the band and orchestra. Item, building fund is $77,744, that is the closeout of the OSS school project to our general fund. Item 18 is public school support is $5,800, that is the fundraiser by Heritage Middle School and then the next item is other grants, $5,999.22 is Leslie Tibby Grants from the Lickin County Foundation and then there is a Wildcat Thon Spaghetti of $1,008 and Newark Makes of $4,000. The final two items to Title I is $12,714.49 negative, $1,003.1358 to improving teacher quality negative, those are just reallocations, reductions from the ODE, Department of Education. The next item is approval to pay invoices, it's item 2D, and those invoices is JBA Architects 548460 at $18,000 and MT Business Technologies 365344 at $21,923.41 and a credit of $2,453.22. These are only on here because of the timing, the work was done and the invoices came in after the fact, therefore the board must review those by law. And item 2E is the approval to discontinue petty cash account for the athletic petty cash of $5,000. We are now able to not have that petty cash at the high school since we have went to a new OSHA program for paying all the workers at ballgames, tournament games, et cetera, and that is now automated where Jeff puts in a request for an official, the official shows up, there's a fund of money sitting there, he approves payment, it's automatically drawn out of our bank account and paid to the officials, so there's no longer the cash floating around the school district like there was before, therefore I'm asking to discontinue that $5,000 petty cash.
Do we have a motion to accept treasurer's recommendations?
I'll move, I'll say.
Discussion, questions? Okay, call the board, please, Jeff.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 3, superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, under personnel, retirements and resignations, we have two retirements I'll point out, it's Deanna Mee, Deanna was hired in 1981 in the district and she is a health aide and Donna Tussie, who's custodian two, were retired, Donna was hired in 1993, we thank both of those two for their services. Under resignation, I'll point out one here under supplemental contracts, Holly Culver, Holly's been our volleyball coach the past three years and I believe that she's done a very good job, it's just family commitment and so she's decided to resign. We do have that position posted and are currently looking for someone to lead our volleyball program, so we appreciate Holly's work. Also have appointments and assignments under here, under supplemental contracts, the majority of those are for the after-school ventures program that we have in our elementaries and middle school. We have a normal list of substitutes, item 8, point out some under other approval of a public notice, recommend the Board of Education approve running a public notice for the purpose of advertising a public hearing to receive input on the issue of retiring, or rehiring Linda Vaughn, who is currently employed in Newark City School District as student services coordinator, will be retired and seeking reemployment with Newark City Schools in the same position following her service retirement. That's just for the advertising of that and nothing else. Continuing contract for Brittany Walters, who is a physical education teacher at Carson Elementary, Brittany's met the requirements for that. Item C, termination of employees under job abandonment, we'll not mention the employee's name, but that employee just stopped showing up for work. Item D is professional development, and I put this on here, normally I wouldn't put this on here, but this is for a global leadership summit in Rome this summer for myself, actually, and it is no cost to the school district and so it's a great opportunity as I've received a scholarship from the Buckeye Association of School Administrators to go for nine days and will be working with students and, and school people from around the world talking about hunger and, and ways to solve problems with hunger and really excited about that, again, at no expense to the school district that way, so. Items 1 through 8.
Okay, we have had a request to vote separately on 8A, so we do a separate motion to approve superintendent's recommendations, 3A, 1 through 7 and 8, B, C, D, B, C and D.
Senator.
Second.
That's it.
Any comments, questions?
There were no scholarships for board members to go to.
I actually shared we didn't have any by interest.
I'd like to vote on that separately also.
Treasurer, go along and carry his bags, huh?
Or make sure he doesn't spend too much money.
That's right.
Let's be thinking, your other half will pay.
Yes, at our expense.
I understand.
Yes, yes, make that clear.
That's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, oh, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Take hold, please.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Okay, we would accept a motion for 3A, 8A approval of public notes. We have such a motion. Second. Question, comments, discussion? Call the board, please, Jeff.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
No.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Okay, under item B, students in curriculum, a normal special education contracts with other school districts, we have foster place children in, also therapy agreement for services, providing speech with the learning spectrum, agreement also with the learning spectrum, provide educational services to students at, again, at the learning spectrum and purchase service agreement with Eagle Wings. And under item C, we have gifts, always appreciate, we're such a generous community that, so we have a monetary gift of $5,000 to Heritage Middle Schools from Park National Bank, which is wonderful, we thank the folks at Park National. Monetary to Hillview from the PTA of $1,630 to purchase additional equipment for the music program, which is a great, great PTA at, at Hillview, so thank you for that, and monetary from CNS Long Care of $220 to the Air Force Junior ROTC program, which is much appreciated. I'll stop there, A and, or B and C.
Okay, we have a motion, please.
Senator.
Second.
which is a great PTA at Hillview, so thank you for that. And monetary from CNS Long Care of $220 to the Air Force Junior ROTC program, which is much appreciated. I'll stop there. A, or B and C.
Okay, we have a motion please. Questions, comments? And then to thank our donors. Page of call roll.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
And then under D, business, advertising of bids. Recommend the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to advertise bids for the following project, White Field renovation Phase 2. So we have, those are broken up into like 3 or 4 different, so we have the East End section there, we have the ticket booth, we have the press box. Mark, am I forgetting one, is it 3 or 4 parts?
The electric in the statue area.
Yeah, the electric in the area where there's gonna be a statue of moving that towards 11th Street that way. So we'll break each bid up there, so the board can choose to do all 4, choose to do bid 1, 2, whatever they come back in. Also, awarding of bids under item 2. Recommend the board approve the purchase of 2 trucks from Essa Corporation for the food service department, and that is $54,115 per truck. Item 1 to.
Accept motion for treasurer's recommendations.
Second.
Questions, comments? The 2 trucks will come out of the food service, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Don't touch our general fund.
The bidding on those, they tried to get more bids, tried to solicit more bids. On one company responded, as it turned out, Mark and his team got in touch, and the same company did the same thing for Columbus City Schools. So we're piggybacking kind of their bid, but they were the only company that responded correctly.
Columbus, the city of Columbus, not just.
Oh, city of Columbus, yeah.
The city of Columbus has already submitted a bid, and we piggybacked on their bid. They received 1 company bidding on their specifications, and those are the specifications we were looking for for our food service truck. So we're using their bid, and they sent their information to us, so we didn't have to rebid that out.
Any questions, comments? Call roll please, Jeff.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Board of Education reports and recommendations, and reports. Board discussion.
Just a couple things, I went to the school board, Association of Capital Conference, and trade show for a couple of days, and it was kind of interesting. There were a bunch of people, I mean, parking was. You can get there early, you were planning to walk along. But it was pretty interesting, went to a couple of sessions. Actually went to one on conflict resolution for school boards. Hope I don't have to use that, so I put that in the way.
Heard you attend the meeting the other day. Heard you attend the meeting the other day.
Well, and I went to one about student athletes and the beyond the win or loss record, and they talked about that. The school had a character award for the month for their outstanding student athletes that they provided. That was pretty interesting. And then we got to go to see our attorney, Richard Eckler, and he talked about harassment and student registrants. It was a pretty interesting couple of days. The trade show was something left to be desired. But other than that, it was pretty good. That's about it. And did the trade show disappoint because you did not win any prizes? They were giving away? No, I just can't imagine that all of those people were there selling stuff.
We'll make any eye contact.
They say, "Do you need?" We already have it. Hey, it was wonderful to see all those folks gathered there, talking about the band, talking about our teachers. My daughter benefited from Mr. Reimer's teaching a couple of years ago last year. And so I know firsthand how excellent the teachers are in Newark City Schools. And so, but also Jacob and Owen, and their running adventures, and the job that Randy's done, you know, shaping more than just track athletes. It's young men who are gonna grow up and do some things because they've learned discipline and structure. And it's, again, it's just exciting to see all those things going on in Newark City Schools. And I catch some of the holiday shows that are coming up. A lot of concerts, and orchestras, and bands, and all kinds of things going on. So, and a little basketball coming our way also, and some wrestlers getting out there too. So it's a, a lot of stuff going on in Newark.
Congratulations to the teachers that won awards tonight. Our, we're in a consortium with 8 other states, I think it's 8 states. And there's just certain things that Newark has that the other districts in the country don't have on the level that we have. And I believe our mentorship program is one of them. It's something that by revised code and also by contractual agreement we're required to have, like many things in the district we do in Newark way, and have taken full ownership of the program, and it has involved a great deal, just in the time that I've been on board. And so I'm not surprised that we would have more resident educators winning awards, that even in other districts. It's just one of those things, allegedly had more. Does that work better? It just doesn't surprise me that we rank in that way with the state. It's just one of the things we do, so I'm very proud of them.
I'm just happy to be a Wildcat. Happy to be here, it's a good place to be.
We, try not to lose an email on my phone, I'm gonna share. We work really hard with our folks to bring in good leaders to work with our children, so it's so good. That group tonight was just a small representation of what we go out and sell to young kids. Come to Newark, we've got new buildings. We have fiscal responsibility, we've got financial stability in the district. We've got a lot of great programs for our kids, but we can offer you a lot too. And our mentor program, and that growth for our teachers is very important. And I know that Barb and Maura and Mindy are, the 3 of them work very, very hard with our new folks at developing that group. And so, thank you to you 3 ladies for your leadership of that group. And because it is important that, we're outselling ourselves when we're looking for staff members. And we are attracting some wonderful kids to come work with our kids, who as you could see tonight, I asked a couple of our students to come because really, for me, I have been watching Jacob Todd for a few years with that group, and he kind of just hung right behind those kids that were leading him. And Owen was always out in the front of that group. The kids right before Owen kind of pulled Owen up to being a tremendous leader in that program. And then Jacob, I saw Jacob elevate to a level that, without that leadership, they wouldn't elevate to. And you heard Jacob talk a little bit about Owen, and it was just really neat to see. But, and I got a magazine today, I was trying to think, why did I get a magazine called Legacy? It talks a little bit about cancer research and those kind of things. And I put it on the desk, and I just weeded through it. There's an honor roll in here, and there's about 48 school districts in this honor roll. It's Stephanie Spielman, cancer research. And now there are well over 600 school districts in the state of Ohio, and a lot of schools. And it was just really neat to see the honor roll here. It says Newark City Schools Student Council Donation. And I was really proud of our students to donate and work for such a wonderful cause. So thank you, Student Council members, for getting involved in something like this and donating there. And then I figured out that's why somebody put it on my desk, so I could weed through and see that. But what really made me proud this month is, we got an email from a young lady by name of Donna Lyle. And she sent this to Jeff Quackenbush with Veterans Day a few weeks ago. And I'm just gonna read the email. "Just wanted to say thank you," in large capital letters there, "to you for your leadership and your varsity basketball team. I had the privilege of sitting near them during Veterans Day Assembly today. They were so respectful. Many times I have said things to other sport members about their actions while in uniform representing their school, their actions didn't represent our school well." She's not talking about our school, obviously, but she's seen some other. "Your players weren't in uniform, but I recognize them. They were polite, they were respectful of the day, they were respectful of their surroundings and the people around them. They didn't know that my father was a WWII veteran and that he had died 11 years ago. They didn't know that my father had been buried on Veterans Day. They didn't know that Veterans Day was and continues to be a very emotional day for me. I applaud you and your team for their behavior, attitude, and respect." That's what we're here for. Tim mentioned a little bit ago, you know, you see grade cards, and you see things like that, that mean a lot. But those kind of things mean a lot more to us as a district. That's who we are in the Newark City Schools. And that's our kids and our leaders, leading our kids and developing good leaders here. Boy, I'm really proud to read that and be able to share that with the board and the community, because again, that's, not only do we win some basketball games, but our kids win in a more important area. And that is that respect and, you know, leading that way. So, thank you, not just to our basketball team, thank you to all of our folks, because it is Thanksgiving, it's a thankful time. So thank you to all of our folks who work with our students, who develop good leaders. It's a great time to be a Cat, and we're all part of it.
I'd like to thank the 3 groups that we recognized for donations and gifts tonight. Also congratulate the students, the staff that we recognized earlier. I also had about 20 minutes at home tonight between getting home from work and coming to the meeting, and I saw that our honor rolls were in tonight's advocate. And they went on and on and on, and I couldn't believe the number of kids we've got making the honor roll. I'd like to congratulate those. I want to congratulate Rob, we're staying awake. He's been having some trouble there.
I was just here.
I'm focused, I'm not staying focused. Good job. As has been mentioned, we've got concerts coming up starting on December 4th, basically about every day or every evening for about 2 weeks. I think those are posted on our website. Get out, support the kids. Winter athletics starting, probably by the time most of our millions of viewers see this, tomorrow night's foundation game will still be over. It will be over. Anyone who sees this, come out, support the foundation, support the kids tomorrow night. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That will take a motion to adjourn.
Seven. I see. All right.
All right.
We've been through that.